Okay, go. All right, welcome everyone. Today is, I don't know, what is today? The 11th, January 11th, 2021. This is a special work session meeting for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss issues related to public health. So I'm Patty Clapper. I'm here in the meeting room. The rest of the Commissioners are zoomed in from their homes, including Francie Jacober, who will be sworn into office tomorrow afternoon. So welcome Francie, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Thank you Patty, and good morning everybody. This afternoon is a Board of Health meeting at 1:00. And because of that and the circumstance of our high incident rate of the virus here in Picken County, we are holding this special work session this morning to get an update on the virus situation prior to the Board of Health meeting, which Greg will be attending. And so we can hopefully give some guidance to Greg as to the VOCC's position on where to go. So we'll hand it over to John Peacock to give us some update right now. Thank you.
All right, thanks Steve. And I am going to share a screen. Bear with me for a moment. Are you all seeing that? I can't see you, so if someone could say yes.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you, I appreciate that. For some reason, to present it, it takes over my whole screen. So thanks for that introduction, Steve. When we were going over the agenda, especially given the decision from the Board of Health to convene a special meeting this afternoon to consider recommendations to amend the county's public health order, we set aside time this morning to both give an update and get some discussion and direction from the Board of Commissioners. So I'm going to try and go through quickly kind of what the current state is. It's going to be just looking at our most recent data. I'm not going to spend a lot of time there. I think everyone's fairly up to speed on why we're having this discussion. Want to give some background and really what that's going to be, updating the board, what we've been hearing since the Board of Health meeting on Thursday. And based on those conversations, public health staff has amended its recommendation to the Board of Health. So want to talk about those amended recommendations and mitigation measures, and then really turn it over to the board for conversation. So this is becoming kind of familiar. We have a very steep increase in our cases. One of the things I need to point out is sometimes data coming into us from testing and such lags, and so you'll see these downturns right at the end. Those have generally turned into upticks, not always. We had a little bit of up and down here, but we're still waiting to see, you know, obviously if this most recent little peak holds or not. We have been doing upper current and lower limit projections. Most recently, we've exceeded those upper limit projections, capping out at an incidence rate just over 3,000 per 100,000. Positivity rates are also increasing. We have been staying below that 10% mark. It's more recently gone up over 12% overall for the last 14 days. We're sitting at 12.4%. 15% is the threshold for that metric to go into the red level on the state dial. Likewise, we've been tracking positivity rates amongst children, and those have also seen a really significant increase following the holidays. And I would note, and the schools did point out to us in our conversations, that the positivity rate has really gone up since kids have not been in school. And that may be, you know, having kids back in school may be part of how we manage this. At the Board of Health meeting on the 8th, so last Thursday, based on our increasing incidence rate, staff had made the recommendation to adopt new criteria for moving into and out of red level restrictions. Those criteria included move into red level restrictions if the incidence rate is above 700 for 14 days, or if one metric is in the red for 14 days and another dial metric goes into the red for any period of time, and then to move out of the red level restrictions if the incidence rate is below 700 and has been decreasing for 14 days. And then, sorry, I cut and paste this, so this is from the last meeting. The Board of Health then had a pretty lengthy discussion and public comment period where I think it's fair to say that the conversation ranged pretty broadly from different types of scenarios and/or combinations of scenarios. And those included not moving the goalposts, basically staying where we are, only moving to the red level restrictions if that second metric, either test positivity or hospitalizations, go into the red, and try and improve on what we're doing, whether that be enforcement or what have you. Consideration of staff's recommendation, there is some support for certainly changing those metrics. During the public comment, there was a lot of concern that right now, the only sector that is not in red level restrictions is indoor dining at restaurants, and just tweaking one aspect leaves quite a bit on the table. And so it may be a long time before we see that decrease in our incidence rate. And should we be doing something across sectors to try and reduce the time that it would take for our incidence rate to go down? And that discussion, I think, ranged from, you know, do you look at voluntarily moving into a stay-at-home order on the state dial, or something like what we did back in March? Ultimately, the Board of Health decided that there needed to be some more conversation and input before a final decision would be made to change the policy, and directed staff to gather that input over the weekend and set a meeting for the Board of Health this Monday, which will happen this afternoon, to consider final recommendations. So we did, the county has been working with a winter planning group that has a pretty broad cross-section of representation, chambers, schools, hospital, public health staff, so on and so forth. We had a meeting of that group already scheduled on Friday, so we used that as our jumping off point to begin having these discussions. Basically, on Friday, the group, you know, it's a lot to take in, and the group had a request to go back to their various constituencies and networks and collect more feedback. So the municipalities wanted time to go back to their councils. The industry reps wanted to convene their, both their board and in cases where they've set up sector groups like Accra has, to convene those groups. Everyone basically said we need a little bit more time to go back and talk about these recommendations. The group was not able to reach consensus on a recommendation. I think there were, except in a few areas, there is real concern about setting the hard threshold of an incidence rate of 700 in order for any additional activities to resume versus having a sustained period of decreased incidence rates. That was both looking around what's happened in the state, and also how much time it might take to reach that threshold. The state had anticipated that with the five-star program, and so one of the amendments to the recommendation is while maintaining the threshold for dial movement, to allow us to take advantage of the five-star program, increased capacity limits when we are qualified to meet those thresholds. So in order to qualify for the five-star program, the county would have to have a two-week sustained decline in incidence rate. The state has a report card basically that they're using for every county to measure that compliance. It's based on a three-day rolling average, so one spike does not necessarily reset it, but they're looking at a decline over 14 days of the three-day rolling average. They're looking for the positivity rate to be under 10% or 10 days of cumulative decline in the positivity rate, and then under 90% of ICU beds in use regionally. And so right now, this third bullet point is met. The first two bullet points, we do not meet. However, the county does have a draft application prepared. We can submit that application to have a five-star program approved and be ready to, we can start certifying businesses so that when our incidence rate, when we do qualify as a county under these criteria, we are ready to go. And so the staff recommendation was amended to include application and, you know, beginning to allow more activity as we qualify for the five-star program. In essence, what happens for counties that are in the red, we need to show that two-week sustained decline, as I said, and it certifies business to operate at those orange capacity levels. So it basically gives us a little bit more flexible metric to work with. In addition, just talking about some of the other mitigation measures that were discussed and are being recommended by staff, obviously, in red levels, all sectors are operating at red level restrictions, except for restaurants right now. If the Board of Health does decide to move to red level restrictions, indoor dining would be closed, takeout, curbside delivery, or to-go, as well as outdoor open-air dining with ones of own, with groups of one's own household would still be allowed. Brian will define the outdoor open-air dining today at the Board of Health meeting, and then there's an APM last call. SkiCo has committed to improving mask and distancing enforcement. Their indoor dining would also be impacted, so the on-mountain indoor dining. We have been monitoring the capacity goals in the ski plan. So far, there has not been one day where SkiCo has exceeded, you know, the targets in terms of reduced overall capacity or skiers on the mountain. However, we have talked about if we do start to see that kind of increased capacity, that SkiCo is prepared to implement a reservation system if that target capacity is exceeded. So we are continuing to monitor that. We'd be looking for, we're looking to some of our other county partners to see if there's any other best practices for improved enforcement of the one household per unit rule, and that's really falling to the lodging community. There was a discussion about setting a 50% occupancy cap. Right now, when we're looking at booking data, really over the next couple of weeks, that capacity cap, we're nowhere really near that. And so staff's recommendation is to consider monitoring to see if we're getting any bumps in bookings there. And then it's really, you know, we heard a lot, you know, the two places I think we did reach consensus with the group is concern about tying to that 700 threshold, which I think staff felt like the five-star program was a good compromise on. Then the other thing we heard a lot of consensus on is building enforcement capacity for all of the things that we've talked about. We've been hiring some capacity, but it is a real challenge, especially when you get to the gatherings at households. We have met through our consumer protection with all our local businesses that provide valet services, catering, that sort of thing, the rental kind of services. That doesn't necessarily touch businesses that may be operating, you know, out of Garfield or Eagle County. So we're still working on processes to improve that. Sorry if you can hear my dog in the background there. But really, we understand that we need to do a better job on enforcement and really locking down on all of these. Other kind of recommendations are really around communications. How do we report outbreaks? We have not been reporting individual business outbreaks versus aggregate information. Typically, that's because, one, by the time outbreak data is reported, it doesn't really, you know, if people are using it to try and avoid where an outbreak has occurred, typically the outbreak has been addressed, and it really does nothing but maybe hurt a business who is otherwise doing the right thing and reporting that information. We certainly don't want to provide any disincentives for outbreaks to be reported in a proactive way. But we do understand that from a population or policy perspective, it's important for the community to understand what's happening with outbreaks. We are talking about doing more public reporting of citation and enforcement actions, and talking about whether that would be more appropriate in terms of those who are violating the public health order and either helping us reduce this incidence rate or not. We do suggest, you know, on less of the stick side, but more of the carrot side, that there'll also be active communication about supporting local businesses while they're operating under these restrictions. Do takeout more, do those sorts of things to try and maintain as much businesses as possible. CDPHE, as I said, does a report card, a five-star report card for Picken County. And then we're trying to, we're also putting together packages to communicate what economic support is available to individuals and is upcoming for businesses. So that's really what's going to the Board of Health in terms of the staff recommendation today. I will say, I think everyone acknowledges that these are difficult choices. We do not have nationally or at the state level adequate safety nets to necessarily ensure covering the losses that businesses or individuals will experience as we try and make decisions that reduce the spread of the virus. But our incidence rates are extremely high right now, and we do not see our box-it-in strategy or mitigation measures being able to work until we get these incidence rates at a lower level. And so with that, I know Greg and Patty, you were at the Board of Health meeting. I think, you know, if you guys have any additional context, or if you feel like I missed any kind of important highlights of that discussion, it would be good to hear what those are.
Steve, or Patty, or Steve's chairing, right? Steve's, I don't see Steve, but I think he's here.
Go ahead Greg.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, John. I appreciate that, that concise. I think you've hit most of the points. I did have some comments and questions, just, I think that what we're seeing in the community is a movement that's trying to build momentum, that this is somehow unfair, and I think we need to address that. One of the things that first came up was that how come lodging is still at 100%? Even though what we're seeing, I think what I heard you say is that our staff, public health staff is saying, well, there's really no need because the hotels are at less than 50% already. I think they're 30, 40% is what I'm hearing. Nevertheless, I think it might make sense to say that we are certainly not taking any attention away from hotels, other businesses, other means of spread, and that it couldn't hurt for us to say something about that, to just say, well, we'll just leave hotels alone since they're already at 40%. What's the problem with saying hotels will be at 50% max at this point? Just, I just wanted to put that forward as a suggestion, because I keep hearing about what appears to be an unfairness issue as it's presented. If I could keep going on, let me finish, and then anybody else wants to jump in. So that was lodging cap. You know, I appreciate what you said about not reporting outbreaks. I mentioned that at that Board of Health meeting. It's like, do we want to have a rating for a restaurant outside their door saying they've had an outbreak? And I realized that wasn't a good idea, and I'm convinced otherwise. I'm glad the staff has brought that forward, and I'm fine with that, because it does create a disincentive for reporting. It also is so far after the fact, as you say, that it's hurtful to businesses. So I certainly don't think we should advocate for that, and it sounds like we're on that right track. Regarding supporting businesses and supporting employees, I'd love to know and be able to articulate today at this meeting what we can do to support as a safety net, because what we're talking about is putting a lot of people on unemployment for a period of time. If we go into these restrictions, I'd like to have a solid articulation of what we're doing and what we can do in ways of helping this community, because I think that's an important part of the conversation. We're not just hanging people out to dry. And I guess the other question I hear a lot is, well, aren't incidence rates going down now that the holiday bump is over? And I think that needs to be articulated very clearly by public health. Sorry, the cat just knocked something over. So that's what I wanted to bring up today. Those were my questions. Also, this idea that the positivity rate among children has gone up while the kids were not in school. I've heard many stories about parents who are very upset that their children aren't in school, yet the kids are having sleepovers, or they're getting together socially, or it seems as if, I'm not sure people have a really solid understanding of the science behind the spread of this virus. And I talked to Josanna this morning about, let's re-articulate what we know about how this virus spreads, so it's not just about what happens in the restaurant, but it happens with the restaurant staff as they go to their second or third job, or they work the private party, or they, you know, the spread is happening in our community, but I'm not sure we're all cognizant of exactly where it's happening. Is it in the bus line on a busy afternoon at the ski resort? Is it in the lift line, and when the lift lines are crowded? We need to examine all these things. So that's my two cents worth, but I'm eager to hear what this board comes up with, and I'll certainly take it all to the meeting today.
And if I, if I could just address the lodging question, Greg, because we did have a lot of conversation about that. And there is, you know, there's equity kind of question out there, as well as efficacy kind of question. One of the unintended consequences that, you know, we identified when we were talking to lodging is we just went through a process of saying, you have to have single households in rooms. And what a lot of lodges did was they broke up, they did break up families. So how are we measuring occupancy? If a unit is occupied because they split one room into two, or one unit into two units or one unit into two units, we heard a lot about that. And we did not have a good answer for that. And so staff fell back more on recommending, sticking with the state framework, recommending the red level restrictions, which have been shown to decrease in other communities. So that's part of the answer there. But there is a real concern about equity. You know, it does, we've moved every sector into the state's red level restrictions. However, those red level restrictions are not the same for all sectors. You know, it's a different capacity limit for retail than it is for restaurants, than it is for lodging. And that's based on, you know, the state's determinations and research about what relative risk levels are of those activities. And so those are the types of things that the board's going to have to weigh. And I know everyone's trying to jump in, so be quiet now.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, I'll reserve my comments a little bit longer, but I do have a question. Has CDPHE tried to help us suss out why our hospitalization data hasn't followed the incidence rate in a way that has been observed in other communities?
Yeah, Kelly, I think all our answers right now are speculative on that front. So I just want to be clear, so I can share some of the speculation, but I don't want to present them as facts because I'm not sure we know the answer for that question. There has been...
And that's okay. I mean, I think we've all heard the speculation.
Okay, I'll let it go then.
...vulnerable populations protecting themselves. I just wondered if there is emerging science on this topic, so thanks.
Yeah.
Steve?
Patty?
Yeah, I'm really here to listen to what the rest of the board members have to say. So Greg and I can help disseminate the board's position at the meeting at 1:00. But as far as restaurant data for the two cases here, two cases here, two cases here in all the restaurants, I would like to see if we have more information. Not so much about second jobs, while we know a lot of people are working private parties and did over the holiday. We know that, and that was difficult to enforce. But I'd like to know about their living situations. You know, I've been in town a long time, and I know that restaurant workers, bar workers tend to, they have a herd, not maybe a herd immunity, but they travel in the same circles. A lot of them live in the same housing. They party after work. We know that. Now we're letting them get off work early. Are they partying longer? I know that some of the restaurants are trying to give their employees information. This is what we would like to see you do after hours to keep our restaurants open. I think it's difficult, but I think it's interesting that we're not reporting customers of restaurants who are contracting COVID from the restaurant. We're only looking at the employees. So I would really like to see more data on those employees and the possibilities of their interactions outside of the restaurant and how that could be affecting those numbers. I think that's really key. And as far as closing restaurants, I don't see it as a two-week closure. I see it as longer, and I don't know about the survivability of both all of those employees. I don't think Friday is giving people enough time to get signed into and start collecting unemployment. I know we're looking at, our numbers are going up every day, but, you know, we have restaurants now that have just ordered food and supplies in after the holiday. What's the hit going to be to that, with their food storage? You know, it's a quiet time in town. I don't think they're going to have mass gatherings in restaurants to eat up all their food by Friday. So I think there are some other things, probably a good discussion with Board of Health, but those are just issues. But I really would like to see more data on those numbers coming out of restaurants to see if we can maybe get a better handle on where those exposures are coming from. I don't think they're coming from the line cooks lined up together. I think it may be from activities outside of the work environment. Thank you, Steve.
So, John, I have a question. Do we have a handle on where the, what percentage of the incidents are coming from which different sectors? How many are coming from private parties? How many are coming from school situation? How many are coming from restaurants, that sort of thing?
Sorry, I muted, Steve. If you give me just a second, that was discussed at the last Board of Health meeting. Let's see if I can find that date. I don't have it obviously off the top of my head.
Well, there's a pie chart, Steve, that is in part of the data, and it's this random number of 43, I think it's 43% coming from restaurants, but it's these little two-number exposures. And then the small parties and gatherings, we know it's been an issue of contamination and spreading the virus, but we don't really have a handle on those because we don't really know how many small parties have occurred in the community. So that's a really tough number to grab.
So are you able to see that?
Yeah.
So, Steve, this is, oh, and this was actually over the last month, not two weeks. So you can see this has a percent of outbreaks, but then the percent of all cases in the past month, based on the outbreak. So these are, this is outbreak information.
But John...
Okay, so it's fairly evenly spread, actually, but between the retail and the restaurants, it was about half of them.
Yeah, but I'd also note that, you know, when we're looking at source of exposure. So that was outbreak data. So this is source of exposure through our case investigation and contact tracing. You've got a pretty big piece that's household, unknown community spread, and about 24% is work and employment. The informal gathering number is small. That may be more reflective of, you know, some of that being down here. I think we know that, you know, eventually, we usually are able to identify those informal gatherings, but people aren't always forthcoming right away in the case investigation process.
Kelly?
Yeah, and I would just know, you know, I listened to the whole Board of Health meeting on Thursday, and, you know, the presentation there was that if there was another source of exposure between workers, it would have been assigned to that type of exposure, not to a workplace exposure. So like a carpooling situation or a party situation where the opportunity for getting sick is higher than, you know, at work where protections are in place and standards are being met. So that's what I heard presented in terms of how, you know, the workers in a workplace are assigned to an outbreak. So I hope that helps. And then...
Thanks, Kelly.
The question that I have is, I thought that there was some discussion about more surveillance testing for our service industry workers, and I didn't see that on this, you know. I'm finding this chat very distracting. I don't know if anybody else is. But if there is other surveillance testing being discussed, because I thought that was on the table, but I didn't see that in today's presentation. And, you know, we've had offers. I mean, the state regions offer, the state has offered. You know, I think that can be a valuable thing for us moving forward, so.
Yeah, no, that's still on the table, Kelly. We have one of the highest per capita testing rates in the state right now. In fact, the highest for counties that don't otherwise have a correctional facility. But you are correct. We are still working with the state on more of a surveillance testing for our highly impacted communities. So we're going to continue to pursue that. It wouldn't necessarily affect the discussion around the public health order itself. It'd be another mitigation step. So that's why we didn't include it today.
George?
I've got a couple of comments, but I see that Frances has her hand up for a while, so.
Go ahead, Frances. I didn't notice your hand up, sorry.
No worries. I just wanted to talk about the difference between the number of positive cases and the number of people who are actually sick. Because we're responding to positive tests, and it seems like it's an emergency, and I'm not trying to downplay the significance of it. But would it be okay if I shared my screen? If I can. Steve, are you okay if I share my screen?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Frances, if you're able, I think.
I'm gonna, I don't know how to, really. I might not be able to. I thought I could.
Frances, there's a green button on the bottom.
Yeah, I saw it, but now I've lost it. Hang on, I gotta figure out where.
Yeah, you gotta move your mouse around, then the share screen button should pop up.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, really screwed up. Okay, so there's that. See, once I open my screen to what I want to share, I lose the Zoom thing, so. Oh, no, now it's starting over again. Okay, well, let me just talk for a second. Because I, where is that? Now I can't even find the Zoom button anymore.
You might email it to John, that might help, if he can share it.
Oh, I did share it with Steve and Greg. They should have it. Have you seen it, Steve and Greg? I Google Shared with you, and it should have come with an email? You do Google Doc Sharing?
Greg, can you look that up so I can keep?
So anyway, what I'm trying to share is a rundown of the numbers from a different point of view. Rather than just looking at the positive cases, I ran a lot of numbers on what it means in terms of people being sick. I can't even find the Zoom window anymore. I think I've been kicked off. Can you guys see me?
We can see you and hear you.
Okay, great. Okay, so out of the, yesterday, out of the 1,488 cases, that's 8.3% of our population, and the hospitalizations is 3.6%. And somebody, Kelly, I think, was asking about the difference between state and county. Well, our rate of hospitalization, our cases, is 3.6, and the state is 5.5. And our rate of deaths to COVID cases is 0.26%. But, so if everybody in Pitten County got COVID, every single person in Pitten County, we would have 639 hospitalizations over the whole length of COVID and projected deaths of 46, just to look at that. However, 80% of people who tested positive for COVID are asymptomatic or have only mild symptoms. So of the positive 1,488 tests, the projected number of people who get sick in Pitten County would be 298. And in Pitten, that seems to be lower, since our hospitalization rate is lower. But so then I also looked at what are the projected numbers of real cases of COVID, you know, of real people who have had the virus? And I went to quite a few different websites, and the average amount of estimated COVID positivities is anywhere from three to 20 times as much as what's reported. So if we just use three as the lowest one that the AMA and the CDC and a whole bunch of people put out there, if we use a scaling factor of three, in other words, if we're reporting 1,488 cases, but really, it should be three times that many because we just don't detect everybody, that would be 4,464, or 25% of our residents. And if we use that, the hospital number now, 54, and we use it in a ratio with the projected number of cases, we'd have a hospitalization rate of 1.2 instead of 3.6. And our ratio of deaths would be 0.08%. So if we use, also use that projected number of how many positivities they think there are out there, we end up with hospitalizations for Pitten for the entire time would only be 213, and the deaths would be 14. So I looked at that, and then I also looked at the number of employees who might be affected. And this is when, this is before I read the recommendations from the Board of Health. It looked like if we shut down the ski area and we shut down all of these things, that like 45% of our working population would be affected. And so I just wanted to put those numbers out there because most of the numbers that we're looking at are based on positivity, not on how sick are people. And I just want us to think about that when we try to make a decision.
Okay, thank you, Frances.
And I would note, there's probably some data that's getting developed. There's a whole impact, Frances, around that question of how sick are people around those who are experiencing long-haul symptoms and such. And there is, at least in our population, a fairly large percentage that are reporting those long-haul. Now, how acute those are, I don't think we have good measures on.
Right. And I'm not trying to diminish that by any means. I know it's a big deal. For people who are sick, it's a really, really big deal. Just wanted to put some numbers out there that are viewed in a slightly different vein.
Okay, George?
Yeah, thanks for those numbers, Frances. Of course, you have to understand that the hospital, it's only a 25-bed hospital. And we also have our normal use of it with skiers, skier accidents, and anybody else who's getting sick or needs operations that take up staff and hospital beds. So we have to remember, it's a small, rural hospital, even though we're able to offer such great services. John, I just, a couple of things. I just want to better understand the staff's recommendation to look at going into red for all sectors, which is basically just would include the restaurants and events, using a 700 incidence rate number. That, would that give us the flexibility to move in and out without having to be restricted specifically by the state? It seems like our success in the past has been the ability to be flexible looking at our specific community. And I think that's important, that we're able to maintain that flexibility either going in or going out, and in the same time, when we're eligible to then file that application for the five-star program.
Yeah, so George, we did confirm with CDPHE that we would have local control. Particularly, right now, there are no counties that are required to be in the red regardless of metrics. And that was part of the governor's direction to CDPHE roughly a week ago. I think that was now. And so we did confirm that if we go into red, we have local control or discretion over when to come out. So I think that answers the one question. And then the, can you remind me what the next question was? I'm sorry.
I forgot. I think that was at many points. As long as we have the flexibility going in and out, and then we're able to, when we can, to apply for the five-star program. Yeah, so then, you know, I, just a couple of quick comments. Seeing a surge now, I don't, I don't think it's any big surprise to anybody coming out of the holidays, right? I think everyone expected that. And our goal, even from last March, has always been to try to flatten the curve to ensure that the demand for services and needs does not exceed our community's ability to provide those services. our community's ability to, uh, provide those services, uh, via medical staff, hospital beds, first responders. And I think we need to keep that in mind. Uh, we also know from January, from our occupancy reports that ACR put out, uh, typically January is slow anyway, uh, and now, this January is probably half of what slow is. So we're looking at, uh, 20 to 30% occupancy with, I think, only one day of 40%. It'd be interesting to know what day that is, if that falls over, um, X games or not. Um, and then also, I think we need to be, uh, remember that vaccinations have started in the community.
Right.
From first responders to those, uh, over 70. So hopefully, over the next several weeks, more and more community members will, uh, be vaccinated, at least with a first shot, that will help decrease, uh, the risk. You know, I think the, um, based on that, that pie chart that John, you put up earlier, um, th- this is more of a community spread versus a visitor spread. And, and we constantly are running, running against the, uh, this battle in terms of trying to get our own community to, uh, obey the public health orders. And that's, 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 I think, is the, uh, the struggle that we're having. And how do we, how do we do that? Um, you know, enforcement, we know it is, uh, is limited in terms of our opportunity. But it seems like our, 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 our public health orders, our, um, uh, applications for, uh, visitors coming in, it seems to be working well. So I, I think those are all positive, uh, directions. And I think the last thing I'd, I'd like to say, that I think it's important, if we can, for this, for the BLCC, to come up with a consensus for Greg to present to the Board of Health. I think it's really difficult for the Board of Health, uh, when they hear from the BLCC or City Council, "Well, we've got a, a split decision." So what does that mean? I think it puts Greg into a difficult situation and doesn't empower the Board of Health, uh, with some, some better information, knowing specifically what the Board, Board of County Commissioners agree on, what the City Council agrees on. Council Snowmass, uh, you saw the editorial today, if you didn't, uh, they, they've got a consensus, uh, forward. So I think that's important to have, for us to be able to, uh, hopefully come up with a consensus for Greg's, uh, comments this afternoon, uh, to the Board of Health.
Steve?
Kelly, and then Patty.
I'll just make one quick comment, and then I'll defer to Patty, and I'll try to organize my thoughts a little more, because they're scattered at this point. But, um, yeah, I just would say, you know, we don't have the benefit of the, um, public health staff here to sort of address some of these questions that are coming up. I think the Board of Health will have that. So, for example, the, the story that, you know, the presentation that Francie illustrated, um, the notion that we've seen in the chat and over email that, you know, enough people have been sick, that our numbers will start to flatten out, I think is, is a misinterpretation. Um, so I want to point that out. And I, I would offer that, I would hope, and, and, I, I, we're gonna have a hard time finding consensus, because, you know, I'm gonna come at this a very different way. But I would say, I would offer that maybe the number of 700 in terms of the incidence rate would be something we could, um, agree on. And I, we've heard from John that there was some disagreement from that, from the community. But I want to point out that this number was not arbitrary. It was selected because that was the number that public health staff felt that the boxed-in strategy would work, and that the resources to contact trace and do case investigations would, um, be manageable. At this point, the box has exploded, right? Like, there's, it, the virus is out of the box. And so if that continues to be a meaningful strategy, then that number has to be meaningful. So I just want to say that that, that was selected with a lot of thought in mind. And I think that that is something that we still can stick around. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll ask for more time in a little bit, while I organize my thoughts. Do you want to go?
And Kelly, if I could just offer, in the discussions, the, the five-star, actually, there was good consensus with the public health staff this weekend also.
Patty?
Yeah, um, you know, I think we just have to be real careful with our wording. I don't want us to voluntarily go into red zone, and then, you know, the state, sometimes, they're, what they tell us one day could shift to the next day, the next day. So, um, you know, I think the orange plus plus was a great plan. I think one of the problems, again, was enforcement. I don't think, it's really difficult to get people out there 24/7, when we know there's events that are happening into the wee hours. Um, so I, I think that if anything, I can definitely agree with tightening up some of the orange plus plus, um, just, just to kind of rein, rein things back in again. Um, I think that's really critical, but keep it under an orange plus plus with some tighter restrictions that we can garner from the red zone. Um, I just think that's a safer way for us to go, to ensure that we're gonna have local control. I think that's really critical for our community. The other thing is, getting back to what Kelly said about, you know, being able to trace back employment-related, um, transfer of this virus. Um, we, we know through the, many conversations with many of our contact tracers, that people are hesitant to come forward. They're not gonna say, "I went to a wild party after work." They're gonna say, "Oh, I've only been at work." So, you know, we need, we need to keep that in mind as we're looking at numbers. There's a lot of those facts, and that's why there's this unknown section of that pie chart, because people either don't know, or they're not being totally honest and forthright in where they have been spending their time. So we need to keep that in mind. That's just the nature of the human beast out there these days. So, but I think, um, getting more information as far as maybe the, again, the restaurant workers, that we can find out more information through their, you know, where they're living, and that, those kind of environs, that, you know, it's, it's these small social gatherings or households that, you know, have that other number in there. I think that's critical. You know, we can only do so much in private homes, but we need to, again, get the community to be part of this effort, because we're finding that the spread is coming through our community. Now, granted, our community demographics have changed dramatically since the beginning of COVID. So we have a whole different thought process out there when it talks to, when we talk about our community demographics and community buy-ins. So that's a, that's a tough one, I think, for us to overcome. But I can definitely, I'm saying this to Greg, because he'll be speaking really at the, on behalf of the BLCC. I'll just keep him in line during the meeting, um, is that, you know, I think we can tighten up orange, but we really need to start focusing on enforcement and education and marketing that message out there. Even though we've been trying to focus on that, we've been stretching our resources in that direction. So maybe that's a discussion that comes back with the Board of Commissioners, with the Board of Health staff, to try and see what we can do internally to get more people with boots on the ground outside, to, um, really start looking at these exposure factors.
Kelly?
Okay, I think I'm, I'm ready here. So, um, as has been the, the nature of a lot of our board conversations, I, I'll probably provide the direct opposite of Patty's. But she and I, I think, demarcate, I think, the polar ends. Um, before I, I do that, though, I do want to just identify a couple of just programmatic points that I think I would like to see. Um, with regards to any five-star program, you know, I think it's crucial that our, um, our businesses agree to certain things. And that includes, you know, a very high level of collaboration as far as, um, you know, presenting their rosters of employees and how to contact them, and their schedules on a weekly basis, so it is easy to contact those people. I think they need to affirm that they've been following the laws that have been in place with regards to paid leave. Um, you know, I can't tell you how angry it makes me to hear from a manager of a multi-billion dollar corporation that it's the county's fault that quarantining people means their workers can't put food on people's table. Like, nothing makes my blood boil more. These people are required to pay their employees. They were required through 2021, or 2020. There's a tax credit to pay them now. Um, this needs to be happening, and we need to stand up for our workers and make sure it's happening. So that's just a programmatic, um, point. I also think we need to be handing out more information at testing sites. If, if folks are getting tested, they should be staying home so they get their results back. You know, they've had a reason to go get tested. Either they've been referred, they think they've been exposed, they don't feel well. Um, you know, the asymptomatic testing, again, if you're traveling, or you have a, you know, you have a medical appointment, something like that. But in the most cases, if people are getting tested, they, they need to, like, take on the precautions. And I think reminders and information about, um, you know, that, that recommendation, as well as resources available to them, social resources available to them, should be readily available whenever someone's, um, getting tested. So those are just some programmatic things that I would like to say. And, you know, I think, um, I, I'm not sure, Greg, you're gonna hear anything more that you didn't hear on last Thursday's, um, Board of Health meeting. I think that, you know, you guys had a very well-rounded conversation, and I think you touched on all points of the community. So, you know, my following comments are just gonna be fortitude for you, um, from my perspective, in how you go forward and make decisions. Because, you know, I think, and I've said this before, I'm a little bit of a broken record, that, you know, we've dodged some bullets here about having to have real valued conversations in our community about, like, what we want to promote, what activities we want to prioritize. And that has meant that I think our children and our schoolchildren have shouldered the burden of, um, the public health orders in many ways. So, to me, the schools have been a real success story in the sense that, you know, they are coordinated and collaborative. So we're not, you know, the, the complaint there is they're quarantining a lot of people, but they're not seeing a ton of disease while kids are in school. So that has been their burden. Now, our private, you know, community, our business communities have not seen that, because there's not the same level of, um, quarantine and coordination happening. You know, by the time our contact tracers call, call schools, schoolchildren's parents because of a, a case, they already know. They know they're, you know, they're already quarantined, they're following the requirements. You know, that similar thing has not been happening in, um, I'd say, the rest of the community. And so, you know, we're at a point where I think that, um, you know, rather than relaxing what the schools have done, we need to have a community pull towards valuing keeping our kids in school. We're at an opportunity where we can preserve five months of in-person learning ahead of us, and that is crucial. We know that keeping kids in school is crucial. It's crucial to them not having private gatherings. Giving them enough work means that they're not having, you know, social parties after school. They have things to do. We've seen it over the holidays. It's borne out. It's borne out in other communities. But I don't, the, the argument that this is all on the school district to decide does not carry water anymore, because our spread is so high, our community has to collectively bring down the numbers. We have to collectively stop the spread if we want to prioritize keeping our kids in school. And, um, you know, I think to do that, something like a target number of 700 makes things more manageable for us. Again, that's double the red, um, you know, numbers seem arbitrary at this point, but we have to have a target that is manageable for our community spread if we are gonna be focused on keeping our kids in school. We have tried all the other approaches. You know, we've tried the approaches of having certain sectors open and closed. Um, you know, the, um, service industry sector, you know, they, they had, they had good summers, they had good falls in a lot of ways. You know, we've tried all these other things. Why don't we try ratcheting down the other sectors and keeping our schools and childcares open? And see how that goes. See how that does for our spread in the community, and for being able to value the real, I think, essential purpose of keeping our, um, you know, our kids socialized, learning in person, and all that. You know, we, we heard in other, just, you know, it's hard decisions, decision-making this year, that what's good for the community is good for the resort. And, you know, I continue to, um, think that. You know, I think that at, at a, at a, you know, 900, 700, you know, where we were at in November, um, you know, a limited incremental approach may have worked. We didn't really choose that. You know, we, um, it would have been better. I think we would have, we'd be in a totally different situation had we gone into red in November over Thanksgiving. But we didn't do that. And so this incremental approach, which we're now six weeks into, it's not working. We need a more blunt approach in order to get this under control and to bring this in. Um, and I'm not seeing that that's being offered here in terms of the staff recommendations. You know, I do, I will say that I think we are in a better position now than we were in November to weather this. So, you know, the county has earned $3.8 million in additional CARES Act funding that we can decide how to allocate, and we can shift that allocation. The PPP loans upcoming are, you know, have been approved federally. Those are gonna be rolling out shortly. Uh, there is a tax credit for employers to pay for people to stay home during quarantine and isolation. There's an additional $300 employment benefit. Like, these are all service supports, so that we do not have to compromise on the public health measures that we need. And, you know, I really think that it's, it's our, you know, parents with working, uh, working parents with kids, you know, their economic burden has been here too, and I don't think it's been widely discussed. I don't think they're as organized in terms of, uh, you know, being able to present their stories. But there is lost productivity, there is lost business opportunity when those parents are home taking care of their kids rather than focused on work. So, you know, there are trade-offs here, and like, I am, you know, it's, I just think, let's try something we haven't tried here, and let's prioritize our kids. Let's, as a community, all pull together to keep them in school, to keep them socialized, to address their mental health, because they have the long, they are shouldering the long-term effects. We are asking, you know, children who are not developmentally capable in to weather the effects of this, rather than a community of adults, you know, to try and patch this together. And I, I'm, you know, I think if that is the statement that we make, I think that if we say, as a community, this is what we value, you know, we will pull together. We will help everybody we can help in the ways that we can. Um, you know, I believe that, and I think we're positioned well to do it now. So, you know, I'm not sure what could consensus on the board around that, George and Greg. Um, but that's where I feel like we're at. I think this is the most difficult time that you have in making these decisions, Greg. You know, I really do. You know, it was hard in March when we had, we didn't have a lot of certainty on what was happening, but there was a collective there that got it, you know? We're, uh, we're, here, we have a lot of disparity in points of view, a lot of disparity in how our community is being affected versus other communities. But I don't think there is disparity in what we value as a community. So, thanks.
So Steve, can I ask a question? Just for clarification?
Yes, go ahead, Patty, and then Francie.
It's, it's, it's my understanding that, uh, keeping the schools open, which, if the school district was to go in that direction, I would totally support it. But we cannot tell the school district what to do. We can give them our position, our advice, our recommendations, but we can't go in and say, "You're keeping schools open, and here are the terms that you will provide in, in classroom education." Is that correct?
So Patty, there, there's probably a couple layers here. So, um, it, it is correct that the, um, school and school board are making decisions about the learning model. Um, that said, uh, as our incidence rate is, is high, and, you know, if, uh, either, I, I think there's two factors, um, affecting the schools right now. One is with high incidence rates, you tend to see more quarantines of, uh, classes and such, and so they're not able to, to necessarily get back, uh, to, to full, uh, in-school learning. Um, and then there's, I think, the, the concern that, that we all have is, as, um, we increase the, the dial level, um, just encouraging employees to, to come in and, and, uh, work in person becomes more of an internal challenge. So I think both of those are, are factors affecting the school. But you are correct that, um, we're, we're not making a determination through the public health order about the learning model, but, um, the, the quarantine piece and such, we are.
Okay. And, and I think in talking to many parents that really do want their kids back in the classroom, and, and I totally understand that, definitely, um, is that it's really difficult for them when they have a plan, their kid goes to school, and next week their eighth grader is quarantined, and then the week after that, their third grader is quarantined. And that makes it really difficult for parents to get back into a work mode, and then think their kids are in school, and then one week one's out, one week's another. And so that's, you know, kind of a difficult logistic for parents to manage. And I don't have an answer to how, to better that. Um, and it's also my understanding that childcares under the red zone are still allowed to be open. Um, I think the only, the only color that they're closed would be the purple. only color that they're closed would be the purple. And I'm not even sure about that, to be totally honest. But, so I think that there are some things out there, and I think that the city, through their Kids First program, is really managing those childcare's that they have under their purview, as far as they're quarantining and explaining to the parents, this is what quarantine means. But, so there's a lot of factors that play into keeping the schools open. But I think it's up to the Board of Health to give some consensus direction, recommendation, whatever, to the school board in their decision on what kind of education model and how they're going to work out those details. So, Kelly, I do agree with you on that one. So, and the other thing is, you know, I think the broader discussion for today's meeting again will be the indoor dining, no, having, not having that anymore, what the impacts of that will be to employees. But that's going to be a whole nother conversation.
Francie, does yours have to do with the education piece?
Yeah. I wanted to respond to that a little bit.
Okay, let's do that. And then we'll go to you, Kelly.
Okay. My internet is really going in and out. I don't know why. But I wanted to say that NPR had a story recently that said when kids are in school, the hospitalization rates did not go up in, I don't know which communities they were talking about, but they did try to correlate kids being in school to whether or not people got sicker. And there was no correlation. In fact, if they may, the numbers may have even gone down because when kids are in school, they have to live within certain parameters that are set up by the school, rather than just being wherever. And particularly for kids whose parents aren't working. I think that's a pretty significant change in their behavior when they're home without parents and when they're in school. So, I just wanted to support Kelly on that. I think that schools being open is one way to help control the number of contacts that children have with each other and with other families. And I just wanted to respond, if you don't mind, Steve, just for one second, to Kelly's thing about the, the money that's available to employees. You know, as a business manager, we have tried to apply for the next round of PPP, but not all businesses get that. And so they don't have to pay their employees. If we, if the county closes restaurants, or the Board of Health closes restaurants, that, we are not required to pay our employees unless they're actually sick. You have to pay them for their sick days, up to 18 total. But you do not have to pay them if they, if the county closes you down. So the employees are kind of left out on a limb without support. And the PPP only goes to businesses that show revenue losses. So for restaurants that have money coming in, but they have to increase their staff to account for all their restrictions of COVID, they don't qualify. So even if you lose your bottom line, if you show an increase of revenues, you don't qualify for a PPP. And without the PPP, it's really hard to pay workers when you're not open.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to be, and I appreciate that, Francie. I, I, the most, the package of options, I think, is important there to consider. So, I realize I wasn't super specific in my ask. So my, you know, with what I was saying is, in sum, you know, we need our community to be healthy in order to keep our kids in school. And in the context of a pandemic that spreads, when we have lots of in-person activity, you know, we need to ratchet that down for our community to be healthy so we can keep our kids in school. So I think we need more reductions in activity than what the staff is recommending. I don't think the incremental approach is working. I think we need a month shutdown of certain, you know, of even more than we've already shut down. I think we're bending over backwards to accommodate and figure out how to accommodate what is non-essential activity. So I do think lodging should be restricted. I think we should go to takeout. I think we should look at whether construction needs to be shut down. You know, is it essential that someone's brand-new bath be renovated right now? I'm not sure. You know, but that's why I do think that the blunt community approach to bringing our numbers down is essential. Because it's not working incrementally. And we know, we, we know it's worked in the past. And I think if we do it quick and fast, then we can reposition ourselves to be a healthier community moving forward into the spring. You know, I think we need to caution ourselves against this assumption that vaccinations mean a, a end of spread. I don't think we know that yet. I'm of the understanding that that's, you know, that being vaccinated doesn't give you a free pass. So, you know, that's where I'm at, which I think is very different from what is being recommended. And, you know, we've kicked the ball, we've kicked the ball down for two months now. So, we're in a better position now to take a blunt approach. And that's what I think we need to. And I think we need to do it so our community is healthy, so our kids can stay in school. And acknowledge that there are families that are dealing with the economic burden of them being in and out of school and out of school. Thanks.
Let me weigh in first, Francie, and then I'll come to you. I have some thoughts about this whole situation. One, if, if we had fast turnaround times on our testing, which one of the chat comments from the members of the public is, we still have too slow of a turnaround time. So when we get the results in, it's almost meaningless that somebody could have been spreading for several days. If they're not going and self-quarantining, they're still exposing other people. But I think serial testing of teachers and restaurant workers and any, and restaurant, I mean, grocery store clerks, the frontline people who are dealing daily with members of the public should be the ones getting serial testing, like even every day. If, if we could do that, and if we had quick turnaround time on the testing, so it would be meaningful. Also, I, I have a feeling that the schools, kids, and the restaurants are the ones being almost punished by having the, the red level restrictions applied unevenly. I think, as Kelly said, it should be across the board. If we're going to tighten up things on the community, let's do it for the whole community and not just a one segment. Our town is open for business, for tourism. The ski areas are open. The lodging is theoretically at 100% occupancy. People have to eat when they come here. What, where are they going to eat in restaurants typically? So that we are a resort community open for business. We need to do some things differently than just shutting down one segment of, of that whole thing. Like, making it harder for people to eat at restaurants when we are inviting them to come to our community, to me, doesn't work. So, what can restaurants do to ensure more safety? Maybe they go to a 20, a stricter kind of spacing of the people or something, doing serial testing of their employees and ensuring that if their employees do test positive, they are out of work for two weeks because they are in quarantine for two weeks while they get over it. Another aspect, I think, there are a lot more people in our community who have had the virus, who are not showing up on our statistics at all. The number of people I know who have had COVID-like symptoms is, and either tested negative or were not able to get a test when they were sick, but they most likely have the virus. I think way more people in the community have had it than, show up in the numbers. We probably have a lot more immunity in the community than we realize from people who have, you know, have developed the immunity from having had the virus. So I think that's one thing that is, you know, people are saying we have healthier community, and therefore, you know, people are not getting as sick. But there are a variety of reasons why that could be true. So we are coming into the middle of January, which is typically the slowest time of the winter for tourism. I personally would wait one week before going to a red restriction. And that's what I would advise the Board of Health to do because we are in the slow time of January anyhow. And I, I think that naturally our numbers are, will, will go down. But to do that, we all, it also requires that the workers, if they do get sick, that they do not go to work and keep passing this around. And that we do more of a serial testing thing as part of the, the whole program. If we can't do more testing and getting people to self-quarantine and not go to the after, the parties after work, I don't think it's necessarily going to work. Our numbers are probably still going to go up. But if all the numbers going up are asymptomatic people who are not getting real sick and not going into the hospital, isn't that much of a problem. That's something that we need to think about also, or the Board of Health needs to think about. Just the high incidence rate of people aren't getting sick isn't a, isn't a drastic problem for us. If you are in Los Angeles and there's somebody dying on the average every eight minutes in Los Angeles right now, that's a serious problem. That we, we just haven't faced anything like that in our community. So, George?
Well, Greg, I, I don't think we're helping you very much. It seems like we're all over the, all over the realm here. I guess what I would ask, and John, again, if you can just go over the recommendations from staff and see if, within those recommendations, what we can have consensus on and, and where there's still some questions. That may be a starting point to try to move this forward, at least for Greg, Patty.
Thanks. Thanks, George. If I could jump in real quick, just to say, I do want to try to address some of the things Steve's brought up and Kelly and others. John, I'm probably taking notes. It'd be nice to go through some of these big questions. But thank you, George. I do appreciate that.
Okay. Kelly, you had your hand up, and then we'll go to Francie.
No, you called on me. I, I was more clear in what I think should be done. Thanks.
Okay, Francie?
I just wanted to have, put in a couple of opinion things before you guys make your decision as the current county commissioners. I'm concerned that if we have closed restaurants, we're going to have way more private parties in the hotels. And, and people are going to get together one way or another. And I'm concerned that if we shut down the places that are following the rules and are helping to keep people separated and socially distanced, that it's going to cut loose in some other area. So, I won't say that. And I think that one of the reasons that the restaurant numbers is so high is because the restaurants report their tastes, are, for their content, a lot of few things.
Francie, you're breaking up.
Yeah, I don't know if you can hear it. She, she wouldn't be able to hear us. I think she's, she's looking out right now.
Good. Anything?
So, again, just, again, to my question to John, if we could just revisit the staff's recommendations and Greg's questions in terms of some of these other points that they brought up, see what we can agree on, not agree on. So we have at least a platform for Greg to put forth this afternoon.
So, looking at the staff recommendation, moving into the red, when I looked at the chart, it was the restaurants who were the ones who were having to do anything different from the orange plus and the red.
John, you're on.
If we are going to, if we're going to go to red, I would have it apply more across the board with having a little more restrictions for everybody, not just for the restaurants. Personally, that's where I would go.
Yeah. So I think, Steve, what you're suggesting is basically doing something in addition to what the state's red level requirements are. Because basically, right now, all sectors, with the exception of restaurants, are operating in the state's red level, except, except for restaurants. And so staff's recommendation was to move to the state's red level on, on the dial. Now, that, that does not affect, you know, as you can see from the orange plus plus, we're, we're more restrictive or as restrictive as red level across sectors. And so, Steve, I think what you're suggesting is doing something in addition to those red level restrictions on other sectors.
John, can, can you enlarge that? Enlarge that?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I think I was reading the chart the wrong way, actually, John. I was picturing that.
Uh-oh.
I wasn't picturing all the other industries, all the other sectors being in the red already. I was picturing them being in the orange plus plus. And if we went to red, it, it wouldn't be any different. We're not making it stricter. You're saying they're already basically in the red, and the restaurants are the one sector that aren't in the red already. Is that, that's?
That's, that's correct. And so, where staff's recommendation came from is counties that did move to these full, or were moved to these full red level restrictions, did see their incidence rates go down. I think the concern that we heard from the community, and particularly from, from restaurants, is multiple. One, that it took quite a while for those counties under red level restrictions to see that sustained decline. So it wasn't a two- or three-week timeline. It was more five or, or six weeks. And most of those counties actually didn't get out necessarily of the, the red level restrictions on, on the metrics. And so there, there is that concern. I think that's what drove the conversation. If we're going to do something, should we do more across sectors to try and shorten that timeline? Then there's also, you know, the, you know, thought that, that maybe our, our incidence rate will just start to naturally decrease. That's certainly not something that we're seeing at, at this point. So, I think that what, George, what you were asking was to kind of go through and see, is there consensus? Sorry. On, basically, what, what staff is recommending is that we do change the, the metrics or, or the, the goalposts for moving into next levels of the dial. That, right now, based on where we are with orange plus plus, does not impact all sectors, which is, you know, part of the conversation you all are having right now. What staff has recommended is that we use the incidence rate of, of 700, or, you know, or the, the two metrics for, for one being in red for 14 days, and then the other being in for any period of time as the threshold for being in red. But that we also create a five-star program, which would, once we've had two weeks But that we also create a five-star program, which would, um, once we've had, uh, two weeks of, um, declining incidence rates, so it's not tied to that 700, um, metric, but it's tied to a decline in incidence rates, that, um, businesses that, um, are adhering to those, uh, stricter protocols that are outlined in the five-star program could begin to operate again at, uh, orange levels of capacity. Um, from staff's perspective, um, I, I think this enhances enforcement opportunities because frankly, our processes of issuing, um, cease and desist orders and/or pursuing, um, uh, consequences through our public health order is a pretty lengthy and cumbersome, um, court process, uh, at this point. And so you haven't seen, um, probably the volume, uh, of enforcement that a lot in our community would like to see. Um, however, um, the five-star program, those capacities could be removed on a business-by-business basis um, with, um, you know, failure to comply with targeted closures, um, for, uh, failure to, to comply with the requirements of, of the five-star program. So there was, you know, we, we agree with the, the challenge that the community has called out on enforcement. Um, one of the attractive aspects of the five-star program is it provides a more immediate, uh, enforcement mechanism and it provides a way for us to address some of the economic impacts as we see a declining incidence rate, not necessarily tied to this 700 metric. As Kelly said, the 700 metric though, for, you know, really coming out, uh, in, into the orange for those businesses that aren't accepting necessarily the additional criteria to be certified under a five-star program, um, is that from a, a box-in-in strategy or a case investigation contact trace strategy. This is a level that staff felt with, um, you know, our, our testing availability and our case investigation contact trace, that even though the state's at 350, we think we can continue to successfully box this in and contain the virus at the 700. Um, is it an exact number? Uh, you know, of course, there's probably margin of error, plus or minus, uh, on this, but it, it's one that, um, our EPI staff felt comfortable, we, we could be successful with the box-in-in strategy.
So Steve?
So I, I don't know, Steve. I, I think George made a good suggestion, maybe going bullet point by bullet point and seeing, you know, what, what the board can agree with, or at least come to a majority.
Okay, we have three hands up otherwise. And let me go to Greg, Kelly, and then Patty in that order.
I gotta go.
Um, yeah, thanks. My, my question was really about this, that 700 level. Um, I know that's what staff is comfortable with. It's double what the state's recommending, so we're all ready, you know, cutting some serious slack there. But I still have the question, is it even practical? Are we gonna get to 700 before the end of the ski season? I, I'm, I'm wondering if that's just, it's what the staff can handle and what they think we have the capacity to handle, but is it, is it even realistic that we can get there? And I'm, I, that, that was my first question. Um, you know, I, I know we talked about contact tracing. We're, you know, we're trying, we're doing our best to get this runaway train under control, but I'm just wondering if, if, if it's gone beyond that point. And I wanna make sure that I don't, I, that the, the staff feels confident that this is actually going to make a difference. Because if we implement th- these measures, uh, and, and they really don't do that much for us, it, you know, are we, are we, are we sure that we're not kidding ourselves that we don't need to do something more drastic? I guess that's, that's my bottom-line question. I'm afraid to ask it, but are we kidding ourselves that this is going to do what needs to be done? And, and I know, I don't think anybody really has the answer to that, but I wanna get another measurement of the sense of confidence we have from our hard-working staff on this. I wanna make sure they haven't compromised so much that, that what we're doing may not have meaning. And I, and I just need to be reassured about that. Thanks. I, oh, the other thing I'd like to point out is that what, the questions have come up from many people that, you know, what is this, you know, we've got this higher incidence rate. We need to rally together as a community first and foremost, but we also need to assure the world that we're doing everything we can. We're doing the best thing we can and we're not compromising the safety and health of our visitors or our community for that matter, uh, in order just to keep the business open. Um, the world's watching us and they're watching our restaurants and they're watching our community in general. And, and I think it's really important that, that we're concerned about spreading this elsewhere. It's been suggested that with an incidence rate and a spread like this, we're actually a spreader. And I don't want that to be the headline in the news. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, I, I did wanna get back to the 700 and, you know, John, you, you know, it sounds as if our staff is confident that these measures are gonna make a difference. I certainly don't want to relax things more. I'm just, I'm still looking for that, that little iota of confidence I need to, to believe that this is gonna make a difference.
Well Greg, you just presented the Dr. Christine Giesel viewpoint right there. We are in a pandemic and we need to deal with it quickly and severely right now. Kelly?
Yeah, thanks Steve and Greg. Um, Greg, I don't think this is gonna make a difference. Again, I, I think this incremental approach, we've tested it over the last six weeks and we're, it's not working. Um, it's truly, it's really unfortunate. You know, I, I, we, it's okay to say, well, the red worked in other communities, but they went all in at one time, you know? So there was like a drastic reduction in activity at one time. And here we've had this very incremental reduction and, you know, I'm not sure it's been a reduction. It seems like it's just sort of squeezed the balloon and people have chosen other activities, other places. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy to support this on the screen plus more. You know, I sort of laid out my expectations for the five-star program that, you know, I think we need to, businesses have to be giving us their rosters, giving us their scheduling, you know, to help with the box-in-in strategy, committing to the, um, you know, requirements, um, for employee paid leave or back pay if they didn't pay employees who were sick last year, things like that. And, you know, I would just say that some additional points, I guess, for consideration, if there is any consensus, um, on the board is to, you know, look at takeout at restaurants, move retail to curbside, um, limit construction to health and safety matters at this point, limit lodging to 25%. Um, look at personal services for health and safety use, um, rather than non-essential activities and just prohibit the activities that we're seeing that are facilitating private gatherings, such as private catering, DJs, ballet, things like that for a period of time of three to four weeks. I would say it has to be, you know, um, the approach that we take. So that's, that's my offer for consideration for the board as to some very specific things for you to bring forward this afternoon. And again, I don't look at this as, I mean, it's, it's hard not to see this as punishment, but I look at it as like, this is how we all pull together so that we can have a healthy community so our kids can stay in school.
Patty?
Yeah, um, cause I'm sorry, but I gotta run pretty quick, cause I gotta get Tommy to the hospital. But, um, I think the five-star program is something we should be pursuing in the manner which we're doing, getting it all ready to go, so we're ready to roll when we can actually send it to the state. Um, I still have my concerns, my reservations about declaring us a formal red zone and how that may come back and bite us. Um, I'd rather us, um, just take in the orange and maybe bring in some of Kelly's considerations and do a, a triple plus, I don't know, something. But keep, make sure we keep that form of local control, um, so we're not caught up in the, the, always constantly moving goalposts at the state level. Um, I think that Francie had a good point and I know from, from just people contacting me that because they couldn't get into restaurants over the holiday, people we know are having these small gatherings that aren't, in some cases, small. I know there's been a huge amount of, of spread in those small gatherings. I would like us to leave restaurants where they are and, um, and just look at enforcement because I think we're punishing those restaurants who have been doing a good job. We need to look at the restaurants that we've had continuous complaints on. Um, I think that by closing restaurants to takeout, we're gonna be pushing people into an area where we don't want them to be, um, which is these small gatherings, which we know have been a cause of spread. So I would like us to leave that where it is. Um, the other thing I want us, just, I'm just putting this out there because of our own epidemiology report. I know the data has been, you know, interpreted so many different ways. But the, the saturation rate, I know that was, that was, you know, projected back in November, December. It may not hold the same weight that it did then, that it might now. But I think we need to keep in mind, if we shut things down and numbers come down, which we all will hope they do, we need to make sure that we're also thinking about the fact we have a saturation issue here and that people have been vaccinated, people have already had the virus and not know it. What are our antibodies testings that are going out, um, to show that people have created this herd immunity? Rather than saying two or three weeks, oh, our numbers came down because we closed down businesses, therefore we don't dare open them up again because our numbers will come up. We need to keep in mind, there's gonna be a natural attrition rate, I believe, just because of the process of the virus itself. So we need to keep that in mind when we're reevaluating in a couple of weeks. You know, that totally doesn't matter which direction we go. We're gonna keep reevaluating. We need to keep that in mind, so we're not saying, oh, we can't open because look, our numbers came down, without looking at the whole picture as to why our numbers have come down. So those are things. I will be attending the meeting, hopefully. Tommy has a cardiac procedure this afternoon, so I have to get him down to Valley View, get him signed in. And then I gotta find a cozy place in a hospital setting to hold by, to come onto the Board of Health meeting. So thank you guys, I appreciate everybody's effort. Greg, I will look at you to, of course, be the speaker, but that doesn't mean I'm not gonna chime in. So, um, I'll let you present what the board conclusions are from this meeting and I'll just be there to clarify anything, okay? Thanks guys. And Steve, thanks for calling this meeting today. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Patty and good, good luck with Tommy's procedure.
All right, keep you guys posted.
Okay, uh, George?
I, I, I would go back into, uh, to support the staff's recommendations at this point. The, you've got, you've got a couple of bullet points in there that, uh, that we can move, um, even quicker into red necessary. Um, if there's a second, um, data point criteria, um, I, I forget how that's phrased, John, but it was this second, uh, point under the first bullet, uh, for 700 and then, uh, as one criteria and then the second point was, or if there's another, um, data point that goes into red, um, so that, that gives, gives us the opportunity to move quicker as well. Um, it, it's interesting, you know, uh, these, as Kelly mentioned, these last six weeks, uh, we haven't seen a decrease, but of course, the last six weeks has, have been during the peak holiday period of time. And, and I'm not sure how or why, um, when we look at, um, our neighbor, our neighboring county, Garfield County, where their incidence rates have gone down, although they never really shut down businesses. So there's a disconnect there, uh, but we also know that we get about 60% of our workforce that's coming up from Eagle and Garfield County. Um, and so I don't know if we could really tell, uh, if there's, um, some metric system to determine those who are testing positive. And I, and, and while I'm on that point, I think Kelly has a really good point that if you're going in for a test, and I'm not sure this is being followed in the business community, if you're going in for a test, then you need to be quarantined until those results come in. And I'm not sure the business community is following that or not. I, I, I don't know, but if they are following it, great. If they're not following it, that should be a requirement, um, as, at least for the next, uh, public health order. I think that's critical. But also trying to figure out where, you know, are they, um, are, are, are they coming in from Garfield and Eagle County? Uh, is that part of that workforce or not? Um, you know, the lodging, um, it, it's really hard to, uh, quantify the lodging. You've got, uh, so many, um, people who coming in who are staying at VRBOs and Airbnbs. And, and, and they, and those, um, units are probably having multi-household, um, uh, mixed units of, of people coming in that we really have no control over. I think we, at least we have, uh, a good control over lodging and I think we have support from the lodging community, but there's this whole very large segment that, that we don't have any control over. And, um, um, so that, that poses a problem. Um... Retail, um, including the markets, you know, back in, back in the summer, um, they were limiting numbers of people going in. Uh, I know City Market down in Elgabel is not doing, hasn't done that for months. Uh, basically you just go in and you go out. Um, so I think there's, uh, ways that we can, the public health order could, um, of course, City Market in Elgabel is in Eagle, is a town of assaults. We don't really have any control over that. But City Market in general, Kroger, uh, we could say, let's go back to what you used to do. Uh, you've got to only limit the number of people that are able to go in and go out, uh, and same with retail as well. So some of these things, as Kelly has suggested, um, have been dropped and, uh, we, and, and it hasn't been beneficial. Um, and so I think we do need to, uh, look at, uh, reimposing some of these, um, restrictions that, that we saw earlier this summer. But I would still support, I would add that, support the staff's recommendations and then add some of these other, uh, criteria and restrictions on top.
So George, in the spring, we had just come off of the ski area being shut down across the whole state. Uh, at the same time, these other restrictions were put in. I don't think you're advocating for the ski area to be shut down right now, but I just wanna clarify.
No, no, not at all. I mean, that, that was driven by the state and, um, I think that would have drastic impacts. Um, if you looked at, uh, Nan Sandin's presentation last week, uh, some really substantial, uh, negative impacts to the social, um, economic, um, environmental climate of our, of our population, so...
Okay, I thought that, I thought that's what you meant. I would agree with that. Uh, let's see, uh, Francie?
This is just gonna be really quick. Um, I just wanted to say that at Fat Belly, what we do is, uh, the employees come to me if they've been exposed, if they think they've been exposed. If anybody they've been in contact with tests positive, they come to me and let me know. That's their last day of work until they get, um, a test. And sometimes until they get two tests. I have an employee now who's doing her second test today because they thought she might have been too close to her exposure when she got her first test. And then, um, and then when they get a negative test and they've played out that set, well, it depends on whether you go by the CDC or Garfield County, but the CDC says seven days. Um, only then can they come back to work. So if we could get restaurants to implement that instead of waiting until, uh, they're tested. Like, I know a lot of places, oh, well, I went to work until I got my test. Well, I don't see what that does, you know? Um, so, um, I think that's, if we can get a handle on the exposure end of, um, staying home, I think that would help the restaurants quite a bit. And I just wanted to, uh, um, sort of support what George said, that Garfield County is pretty wide open. I mean, a lot of restaurants have, um, closed down by their own volition, like Fat Belly only does, takeout and quite a few of the restaurants in town in Carbondale do now, but, um, and the, and they're not getting the, um, increase in incidences that we are. So I just, I, I'm not sure Greg meant it quite in this direction, but it would be terrible if we shut down and it didn't work. And so not only have we really forced a whole lot of people into unemployment and, and, um, burdened some housing costs and all of the...
burdened some housing costs, and all of those things that come behind losing your job for, like, two weeks. And then, and just my last thing is that John had said that the state was really proud that the counties that they had put into red, their numbers went down, but it wasn't a short-term thing. So, you know, we're really talking about, if we're using that metric, that going into red reduces incidences, we're talking about weeks. And the negative impact of that on such a huge part of our population is staggering.
So weighing all things considered, and, you know, lots of public input, there's the whole mental health component of this, which we haven't even talked about. But I, I personally would rather stay in the orange plus plus, including for the restaurants at this time, and give it one more week because we're going into the slower period of January. I don't want to be, have Picking County tighten things up and have Eagle and Garfield still stay the same and have workers coming up. And, you know, we have no control over that. But if we, if we do anything, I think it should be in unity with the other two counties, personally. But since we don't have that huge of a medical problem right now, like other places, I think let's give the restaurant owners the chance to have really, like Francie is suggesting, a little tighter control over their employees and the testing, and not letting them work if they're at all sick, and not letting them, try to urge them to not go to any parties whatsoever. There's a lot of people in our community who have been on stay-at-home for nine months And myself included. I don't go to parties, although I, you know, there are times I would have liked to. But, so I think that the restaurant workers, if they want to keep their jobs, they need to respect that also. And the restaurant owners can help them achieve that. And I'm concerned also that if we shut the restaurants down, the people might do the pickup, takeout, get the takeout food, and then go to their private parties with, that are going to be not controlled as much, and will have just as much spread as before. And I don't, I don't think that's a way to bring our numbers down right now, personally. So I guess, you know, we still have a division on the board on which way to go. I don't think we're going to get a consensus. George?
No, but I think we're getting closer, actually. You know, I know, I know we've been focusing pretty specifically on restaurants. But back to Kelly's points and back to some of my comments, I think we need to go back and revisit what we implemented last spring. Retail, limiting the number of people that are able to go in and out of the store. Construction, no carpooling. I mean, that, that has completely gone out the window. If you, as I'm going up and down the highway and, and looking at trucks, and, and not only the carpooling, but they're not wearing masks either. So some of these things that we implemented earlier have gone out the window, and we need to reimplement them without having to be drastic in shutting down the entire resort community, so.
Okay, Greg, you are the one carrying the bucket for us this afternoon. Do you have, do you feel okay with what you have heard and having enough to go into the meeting and present, you know, our combination of viewpoints?
You know, I think we've heard what everyone has to say, and I, I really appreciate and thank everyone. I'm, I certainly feel as if I have a loose grasp on it. My personal feeling is that probably the safest thing we can do, and the most coherent thing we can do, is go with staff restrictions. But as George and Kelly and Steve, and you as well, have said, we need to, we probably need to ratch down other restrictions.
Hey, Greg, something happened with your mic. We're not hearing you.
Get where we need to go. Am I locking up? Are we all still there?
Can you just repeat what you said? We didn't hear you well.
Oh, sorry, yeah. We've got multiple people in the household on Zoom this morning. So I, I think that what I'm hearing is the orange, or the restrict, or the, the recommendations made by staff are a good foundation. I, I hear an argument for staying with orange plus plus, but adding restrictions, I kind of feel as if we need to, you know, I, I would like to set with, with John and, and try and work it out to make it a little bit more cogent once for when I go in. I sympathize with what Kelly's saying. I, I'm skeptical that we're going to be doing enough to really make a difference, but this might be all we can do. If we're going to try to get consensus from Eagle and Garfield Counties, we may as well just open the floodgates. I, I don't see that happening anytime soon. And what I, I guess my general impression here is this is coming down to personal responsibility on the part of everybody in our community who has an interest in keeping, keeping our community afloat and healthy, or returning to health. It's going to be down to personal, just because people can skirt our rules any number of ways. So it's, it's really hard to make rules that make sense or, or, yet we have to do that. I've taken a lot of notes. I'm inclined, and, and I invite you all to, to weigh back in, but I'm inclined to stay with the staff, the staff recommendation. But then I'm going to advocate for ratcheting down in other sectors where we can. And I, I think that that's what I'm hearing from almost everybody here. I appreciate that Francie's weighing in as a restaurateur. It really helps because we see, we get the perspective, and that, that's very helpful. You know, making an appeal to the community to do the right thing, it sounds so naively optimistic. I just, I just have trouble believing it because what we have now is a community that thinks we're out to get the restaurant community when really we're just trying to keep everyone safe. And so it's going to take a huge effort on outreach. So I'm going to say right now, because I think I've said it, John, I did have a couple of questions regarding serial testing, you know, more frequent serial testing. Is that, I know some restaurants are doing that. Whether they're doing it 100% properly, I'm not sure. But how likely is it that we could create that for our community in terms of increased serial testing of, of the frontline workers, whether it's teachers, restaurant workers, or hotel workers, whatever?
So I, I think we've got that in the schools now. You know, there is testing capacity still out there for, for folks to get tested. But we are having the conversation with the state about increasing. But I, I don't think a lack of testing capacity. We're doing per capita, two to four times more testing than our neighboring counties. You know, if you take the counties out that have correctional facilities with a lot of serial testing happening, because that makes up a lot of their population, we're either number one or number two in the state. And so I, I think when we do serial testing, we're actually going to find more positives. And as we, so probably drive our incidence rate up a little bit, maybe, maybe not. Well, you know, we'll, we'll see where that goes. But right now, I think the bigger concern is that with the incidence rate as, as high as it is, there's broader community spread that, that's happening. So we are working on that serial testing opportunity, Greg. Now, do I think that that's a magic bullet that's going to drive these, these rates or spread down? Not necessarily, just because of how high our, our rates of spread are right now. Is it a longer-term tool? Absolutely.
Kelly?
Yeah, Greg, thanks. Yeah, you've heard kind of our boundaries. I think, you know, if we, if we want anybody, I think, to, to look to our direction, doing an orange plus 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 flame, maroon, whatever color that's not red or purple, just diminishes credibility. So you've heard a little bit of a mixed bag on that from our board, so I just wanted to put that plug, that the staff recommendation addresses that.
Thanks, Kelly. I, I appreciate that. I hear you.
I have to go. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for being there for this afternoon, Greg. I'm going to listen in today. I'm going to skip through my meeting so I can be in on the Board of Health meeting too.
I encourage everyone to listen in, and, and you've got my texts. You can email or text me, and I can try to field things on the side as well. I don't expect to be talking an awful lot at this meeting. I'm here, I plan to listen, and I want to make sure we hear what everyone else on our, our Board of Health has to say. I think what I would like to do with all your blessing would be to probably call it a day here on this meeting, but then John and I can, you know, we can review and ask questions of each of you individually if necessary, but I, you know, without violating any public rules. I'm not trying to be secretive. What I'm trying to do is just gather the consensus here as best I can. And if we need to run that forward through what people, just for a thumbs up after, that would be up to John's advice. But I, I kind of think I've, I've got a lot of notes here. I think I know where we stand for the most part. And, and if there's anything else you want to tell me, please do.
Okay, thanks, Greg. And I think, I think let's call this the end of the work session right now. We covered a lot of ground again. We didn't, we haven't solved this problem yet. We need to keep working on it. But thanks, everybody, for coming to this extra meeting this morning.
All right. We'll see y'all soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck, Greg.